At time being 6:30, we will call the meeting of November 9th to order for the Oxford School Committee. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I have a brief statement to read, please. On behalf of the Oxford School Committee, we wish to extend our thoughts and prayers tonight to the Ennis family. Our colleague, Mrs. Ennis' husband, Steve, passed away last Friday, and our deepest sympathies go out to the family, especially to Brenda and Molly. I would also like to take a moment to say that Mrs. Ennis would and is the first to applaud the recognition of success to our students here in Oxford, and I'm sure she would want us to continue with tonight's meeting because we have the opportunity to introduce to the community of Oxford someone who qualifies for just that recognition. So our first note on tonight's agenda is our MAS award, and I will turn it over to Mr. Himmelberger, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to present to Tara Jarobski the Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence, and this award is given by superintendents across the state to the student who has the best...
Could I interrupt you and have maybe Tara come up with her parents?
Just gonna have them come up.
Put them right on our stage up there so people can see her.
With an extra chair, maybe, if Tara and her parents could come up and have a seat.
I know. I want them on TV as long as they can be. Thank you, sorry.
And this annual Academic Excellence Award is given to the senior in the fall of their senior year who has compiled a very strong three-year record and also class rank and recommendations of high school administration. And it is given in the fall so that the recipient can use it for their college portfolio. And also, Worcester County Superintendent's Association will have a dinner, a luncheon, excuse me, in January at Holy Cross in which Tara will get to meet all of the recipients of the high schools across Worcester County as well. So if I could call upon Mr. Trahan, who fills many roles. And if Tara and her folks could come up, and we'll get this on camera many times.
Marvelous.
The award, it says Certificate of Academic Excellence awarded to Tara Jarobski, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Mas Association of School Superintendent's. Is hereby awarded this certificate of academic excellence. There's a square up, the seal of the association, and signature of the superintendent of schools. Much appreciated, too, thanks. And as we all know, behind every successful student, most of the time, our teacher has supported parents. So again, she's very proud. Congratulations on your progress, and we look forward to following you in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Yep, Mr. Spitz, we have some probably comments.
I do.
Yes, absolutely.
Tara was actually on the Curriculum NIESC Study Committee with me, and she deserves that. She's a great kid, really was a lot, gave us a lot of great input, and I want to thank you and congratulate you.
I just want to congratulate you. I know I no longer have children in the system or anything else, but this is what I continue to serve for. And this makes us proud as a system than what we really are striving for at this table. Congratulations.
I just want to echo that, Tara. I know the Jarobskis for a while, and they have wonderful children, wonderful child in Tara, and she is a member of our girls soccer team, too, so she is very multitasking. So congratulations, we are very proud and wish you the best. At this time, I am going to deviate and have our student representative give us her report. Nikki?
Okay. All right, our turkey run is underway. We have all the groups doing a basket. We have each curricular club does one, and then each education department does one. So the math department does one, the history department, and then last year we had 42 baskets, so hopefully we can do that or better, and we had extra turkeys and everything last year. Coming up next Wednesday is our student-teacher basketball game, supported by Best Buddies, where we have a team of students and a team of teachers, and they play a full basketball game, and we have a 50-50 raffle, and it's a great time for Best Buddies and for the whole community. And with our new advisory periods, we have competitions going on between the classes. We have who can decorate their door for Thanksgiving the best, and that's being judged by Mr. Wells and Mr. Nugent. And we also have a can drive competition, who can collect the most perishable items from their class, which will be donated to the needy around town. And the winner of that gets an ice cream party sponsored by the Student Council. Our Sadie Hawkins Dance is coming up on November 20th from 7:00 to 10:00. That's sponsored by the NHS, and tickets are $7 for that. Parent-teacher conferences are this Thursday, November 12th from 6:00 to 9:00, and this Friday night from, I mean Friday during the day from 11:00 to 2:00. And our Thanksgiving Day football game is at Auburn High this year.
You did very well. You've got a lot going on.
I know, there's a lot going on.
Well, we thank you for that and keep us posted on everything. So how many, have we put a goal for our turkey run? How many more do we need? We need at least 42.
Right, at least 42, but hopefully much more.
There you go. Thank you, Nikki.
Can we call Mr. Boss?
Some people stacked the deck last year. Mrs. Daly, you are up. We have a presentation for curriculum.
Thank you for the opportunity to share the curriculum that we've worked on with curriculum since the start of this school year. The first opportunity we had at the start of the school year was a literacy grant, fully graded, K through 12. If I can grant, if it's awarded, it will be about $18,000. Because we don't have a formalized writing program in the elementary school, empowering writers would be a good program to implement. A few of our teachers at Chaffey had piloted last year, and we'd like to continue with that if it's awarded. All teachers in grades K through 4 at both elementary schools will be trained. They'll receive all the curriculum as well as materials to implement the program, as well as supplemental libraries. We'll also train teachers in, English and reading teachers in grades 5, because that's kind of a segment of this portion of the grant. Hopefully, it will be in early June, we'll be able to offer the training as we have in the past at the end of the school year.
We're just trying to, mic's closer to you.
It's a soundboy for home, too. We can hear you, but...
I may not be good with that.
I think it might pick you up. That's fine, thank you.
Okay, we also have the opportunity this year in our middle school to work with WPI's science program. I was approached by Dr. Janice Gober from WPI, who offered her program, which she's creating this year with graduate students and doctoral students. They create labs, so after our teachers teach in the middle school, teach their curriculum in the middle school, they then go into the computer lab to work on these programs. And the doctoral students and grad students are there to not only collaborate with the teachers, but also to tutor students in areas that need it. So teachers thus far that have volunteered are in grades 5, 6, and 7. She will do grade 8, may expand as well. I'm sure once, because it's new, once teachers see how it goes, may be more willing to participate. When we came back to school, I passed a survey out to all teachers in grades K through 8 to kind of get a feel for what is actually being taught in our schools, the books that we're using, so that hopefully everything is aligned to the curriculum, to the standards, and if not, we can work on those areas throughout the year. We worked on, with the help of Mr. Trahan, I'm working on a curriculum and assessment webpage, which will be an ongoing project for a good amount of time. But this is, this is a device or a resource for teachers as well as parents aligned to the frameworks. Thought I was going to be able to show you. If I talk nice to you, maybe. Okay, Neil. Maybe it will come.
It's fussy.
It's loading.
Got a hammer back here if you need.
We're taking a shortcut, isn't it, and I hate to, there we go. We're taking a shortcut?
See, mind if it's on, it's gonna mind if it's on.
Not the computer person. We're there, anyway. It is listed, our curriculum and assessment webpage is listed right on, right on our website. What I've done with the assessment piece, we'll do first. Okay, each of the tests or assessments that our district is currently working on is here. Describes the test itself, describes when the test is taken, but because this is MCAS, a little more lengthy than the rest of the assessments that we currently offer. But parents or teachers can go right on here and check to see when that portion of the MCAS will be given in 2010. A little further down, our map description is here. There's a website to NWEA that parents or teachers can go to for, as an extra resource. It discusses when students are tested, so the parents can expect when progress reports will be sent home. We also use DIBELS in our elementary schools in grades K through 3. The description of the test is here, when the assessments are given, as well as some practice activities for elementary children, if their parents or teachers would like to work with those, to drill some of the areas of concern. For the curriculum piece, describes the curriculum that's currently being used. I thought. Broken down, we've kind of created a graph or a chart. As we develop, we can go to the frameworks for each curriculum piece. And then there are support activities or enrichment activities that teachers can go to. This is going to be an ongoing process, so that any time teachers come across something that they'd like me to add here, we can certainly do that.
Mrs. Daly, can I interrupt? Can parents also find out a little bit what the frameworks for that year are, so they kind of know?
Absolutely, yeah.
That's a great...
Right on here.
I know, sorry. I know, had to sidetrack you.
This was downloaded right from the state's webpage, so it's a little, little easier for them to navigate through our webpage.
Yeah.
Hopefully. Here it comes. This is the entire English frameworks, and it's pretty much listed there. Everything is the F word.
Wow.
Then taking those standards, I researched a bit to find some activities that tie into each of those standards. Better with the curriculum than I am with PowerPoint, apparently. And if they touch on, they click on that, this will open to some activities that support each of the standards as I find them. This one here, this is the social studies section. The standard 4.10 is identify the states and capitals, major cities of each region. That's the actual standard that our teachers in grade 3 and 4 should be working on. Here's an activity to practice that. With this activity, the map is here. Child grabs the state and brings it to where it belongs. If they get it wrong, if they put it in the wrong place, then it will go back, and then they can bring it to where it belongs. So that's kind of a great activity for, for practice there. It's also an applet I'd like to, if I can get to the math piece. There are the frameworks for math. Are all listed. And then the activities are listed as well. And as we collect more, we'll keep adding to this. This one here is, the standard is 4.11, no multiplication facts through 12 times 12 and related division facts. Use these facts to solve related multiplication problems and compute related problems. Example, 3 times 5 is related to 30 times 50, to 300 times 5, and also 30 times 500. Here's an activity that goes to support that or to practice that skill. One more time. My fat fingers are something, I don't know.
There you go.
On this one, the child clicks 4 times 7 equals, colors in the squares for them. They can count up the squares and figure that, find out that it's 28. Or they can go 8 times 8, it equals 64. The answer is here, as well as kind of scrolls down for them. So that would be a work in progress, probably, for the rest of my career. That's, that's going to be an ever-changing piece there. Behind the scenes, we're getting to my place here. We also purchased the Type2Learn typing program, which is a web-based computer program now that students can work on at home as well as in the classroom. We're going to provide professional training throughout the school year for teachers so that they can implement that to their classroom or to children who really need that extra typing practice, and we'll work to incorporate this typing right into our curriculum in the future. Math testing is ongoing. We just completed our seventh round of tests. We're testing in grades, grades 3 through 9 now. We have the continuous data collected for students now, starting on our third year. So that's, that's a huge piece of data for our teachers and administrators. Continuous support, it's nice to have in-district people that can go out to teachers when they're stuck getting their reports, pretty much immediate response to that. And we're evaluating the math reports to identify our strengths and our areas of need or concern. And last but not least, several of our teachers are participating in a poetry contest with their students. Their children can actually have their work published. For every, for every participant, teacher's name is put into a hat, and they have some grants that will be awarded to teachers at the end of the school year, from $250 to $1,000, just for, just for entering the contest. Plus, the children get the experience of doing some poetry, which is one of the MCAS things. Thank you.
That's great. Do we have any comments, concerns from the committee?
This is all up, so we can go through it. Can we take the Type2Learn, too? I'm going to hold for typing.
Maybe we can get, it's online, we can watch it practice at night, sure, sure.
Mrs. Daly, thank you very much for coming in and giving us an update. I know you're, you're working diligently on the curriculum and getting us all lined up. I think this is great, and I hope parents get the chance to see this, and maybe somehow we can educate them that that is online, because I can't tell you how many people say, "I didn't know by third grade my child was supposed to learn this." That's a really great tool. Yeah, and it's great that they can go in and say, "Oh, by that age, or that grade, this is what they'll be, you know, looking at." So I think that's a great tool, not only for what you're doing, but for parents, which is a big thing for us about communication. Yeah, and I really thank you for doing a lot of that work and getting it up.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will go into our approval of minutes of October 26. Do I have a motion to approve or any corrections?
I have one correction.
Mr. Peterson?
Where is it? It's actually on the back of the third page. Under my request, number five, school committee request, under my request, it was for the softball field, not the football field. That's Mr. Denaeus's list, the football field is the drainage part of it. It's actually softball, not football. I mean, the football field doesn't drain like it should either, but we're not going to tear that one up right now. Softball field is going to ask a big problem.
One field at a time.
It's actually softball that I requested to move on, hopefully this fall.
With that correction, do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I vote yes, being the affirmative, one, two absent, please. Minutes pass. At this time, we'll go into our unfinished, the growth model on MCAS presentation. We are going to hold for the 23rd. We still got a presentation and some data going in, and I think our other colleagues may wish to be part of that because it's very, very interesting. So Mr. Himmelberger will have a presentation on the 23rd, so we will hold that. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Himmelberger just to give a slight presentation on the Project Coffee MCAS results that we've asked for.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Enclosed in your packet, you should see the results of the Project Coffee Spring '09 MCAS tests. It's interesting because Nancy James, who is our director, said that, you know, the level of difficulty is incredible with some of our students there who are reluctant to even sit for the test. And yet, as you go through and see, there is some pretty amazing results here. And I'm going straight to the back page for the 12 seniors that are expected to graduate in June of '10. And eight of them are already on track and have passed all of the requirements, and there are four who still need to pass one or more on the retests, on the retakes. And so they are working diligently with our Project Coffee students. And just as a quick note, it's somewhat complicated, but it really isn't in terms of how the state now is tracking all of the data and the Student Information Management System data that we must report every year. We've always had Project Coffee's data reported through Oxford because we do realize the financial benefit of those students. So they've always been a part of the total. And certainly, as you look at the MCAS expectations and the results so far, the fact that hopefully all 12 of our seniors will be on track to graduate, I think is a terrific testament to the, to the program. As you can see from some of the younger grades, there are some, obviously, some of the similar patterns that we see across the state, especially in the science, which is new as a requirement for 2010. And so we have the similar issues, and we go back and we tutor, and we also give them the supports that they need to achieve on the retakes. So I know that the committee had requested this data, and obviously, the, all of the cautionary warning around the labels in the front. Because the cohort is so small, in order to protect student privacy, we really can't delve into actual facts and figures and numbers. But the bottom line is that we see similar patterns with our Coffee students, and we have seen similar results this year on our seniors, and I think that that is terrific. And obviously, there are some challenges as you look at the science in the younger grades. So I just wanted to bring that to the committee for their review.
Thank you, Ms. But I do see that there is a similar pattern. It's kind of interesting on it, but thank you for just getting that information to us, and that completes the whole MCAS picture. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. I requested this because I wanted to see how we were stacking up completely, because we're charged with these against our records, not the sending schools. I am concerned, though, because like you said, there is a pattern, and I did bring it up last meeting, too, but I'm going to bring it up again. We've spent numerous hours, Saturdays' time and money on the math, and all of a sudden, we're backtracking on math. I understand that the science is new. Are we putting too much emphasis on something else and losing our track of math because that's one of the stables that we had spent a lot of time and effort on, including having Saturday MCAS sessions and everything else?
I will defer to you, Ms. Himmelberger, but I think also some of these comments, questions?
I don't mean Project Coffee, I mean our MCAS in general.
I think when you see the next presentation, I think you'll get a real handle on where they're going, because I think...
I hope so.
I think when you see the numbers as we have the presentation.
It is a concern to me, after sitting here and helping and making the Saturday math sessions and things fly, and again, like you and I asked for, compare A class all the way through and not a fourth grade against the fourth grade. But in, along those veins, now looking at it, I'm seeing a slip in the math end of it. I don't want to see the math slip if we're devoting too much time to something else. I know science has to be included in there now, and you have histories and things coming on, but...
Yeah, Ms. Himmelberger, if you want to mention that.
It is cumbersome to do all of them, I understand.
Right, and that's fine. Ms. Himmelberger, if you want to answer that, I think we can hold some of these MCAS to your presentation on the growth, because I think they'll all come into play, very much so, Mr. Peterson.
And one, one further, if I may. The four, whoever's in question, when are the makeups and how soon will we know where they stand, and are they going to make it to graduation this year? We're on track. Being on track does not mean come February that we've completed the track. I want to make sure this is all done, so we don't run into the problems that we've had past February is finding out a kid's not going to make it. I mean, we're here to make them make it or make it, help them get through it. And I don't want to wait till February to find out we can't help them get through something.
To Mr. Peterson's point, certainly a fair question on the first issue that Mr. Peterson raised regarding, where do you put your focus and try and, and try and strengthen one? And it seems that the normal tendency is, well, we're okay in ELA, so we'll put all of our efforts into math, and all of a sudden, now we have science on the horizon, so we're rushing to try and focus on science. I can assure you that every teacher and every administrator gets across to every student that all of the individual tests are important. And obviously, we have seen the trend throughout the state where grade 8 and grade 4 do not nearly have the same results as grade 10, because all of a sudden, in grade 10, it becomes a requirement. So I would, I would submit that each one of those tests is being treated with the same amount of importance, and certainly where there is room to make up in science and in math, that that will get a fair amount of the resources. There are retests throughout the year, and I don't have the exact dates, but I do believe that some of them were online, and there is retests even up through April, I believe. And so it may be that it comes down to the wire for one or two of our students. But again, administration works very closely with the DESE to make sure that we have all of the materials accounted for, that we have the test dates allocated and blocked out so that our students can perform to their best. And, you know, unfortunately or fortunately, it's still the law, and until the federal government decides to weigh in and reauthorize ESEA, that's going to be what we have as our goals, and that is to, by 2014, have all of our students proficient in all of the tests. And mathematically, we can see that's a tall order for the next five years. So it'll be interesting, as I said, to see how the reauthorization goes, but for now, this is what our mission is, and we will continue to focus every day, every class, every period on this mission. And I think that, you know, as we continue to allocate and use some of the resources that Mrs. Daly has brought up and that Mr. Trahan worked so hard to bring to the district, that we will position our students to compete as well as in any district. And to Mr. Peterson's last point and to what Mrs. DeWittsick had said, the state has just come out, and I'm not sure how many have heard about it, but with this new initiative called the Growth Model. And what they have done is they have taken, obviously, a lot of mad scientists to compute these programs, which will allow us now to look at each student's history and then compare that student across the state to the same students with the exact same achievement. And we can take that past data then, and then go forward and look at how well that student does compared to themselves or their cohort. So it will give us the percent... So, it will give us the percentile of growth along with the raw scores. And I think, as Mrs. Dewitsek alluded, when we put those both together, it's going to give us some very, very good data on where our students actually are, and not compare them as we have for the first few years to the previous class gone by, or to, you know, two or three classes back. But our students now can be compared to how well they do against their cohort across the state. So, if everybody that scored a 220 on the spring MCAS in ELA can then be compared to previous data, and then look at where they are on the next test, to see how well they have grown against their own achievement, and not to be compared, sometimes unfairly, with another class. So, I think that this, which is a huge initiative, they've spent a lot of time and money to roll this out, I think will give us an extra layer of data, which will really be terrific in terms of pinpointing not only the weaknesses maybe that a district finds, but also the strengths. And then, the best practices could be rolled out across other districts as well. So, it is, I think, going to be very exciting, and I will make sure I have that with Mr. Trahan's help, ready for the 23rd.
I was going to say, you're doing half your presentation now. You know that.
Right. But it is amazing to see it, and it will be a terrific advantage, I think, as we go forward.
Yep. I look forward to that. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
And I do too, because we've requested this for a long time, and I hope that's what happens. But what I would like you to do, Madam Chair, is put on your docket for mid-January's meeting, a follow-up on this, so again, we're not caught with our legs tied in a knot. First of February, I would like a final report, or an updated report by, I don't know what our January meeting date is, but...
Okay.
By the second meeting in January, please.
Yep.
And if Mr. Himmelberger would put that on his calendar also, please.
We will. Terrific. All right. At this time, we're going to go into our new business. I'm going to ask, we do have a presentation or a comment from Shirley Delano. Thank you. Shirley, why don't you come on up and have a seat? Mrs. Delano has spoken with myself and the superintendent regarding our flyer distribution policy, and would like to, at this time, speak to all of us that are here regarding what she has proposed and her thoughts on that distribution policy. And I suggested, yes, why don't you come and speak to all of us at the same time? So, Shirley, I will let you speak, and we all have, I did give you some of the flyers too that are here. So, I'll let you...
First of all, thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak. What we've done in past years at my office, I work for ERA here in town on Main Street, we're right in front of the community center, and usually, twice a year, we hold a function for the community. We do a little haunted house at Halloween time, and the kids come in. We have sponsors. We have people who sponsor this. They give us money for the decorations and the candy, and the kids come in. It's scary, but not real scary, because we target the elementary school kids. That's who we want to target. At Christmas time, we have a winter wonderland. The entire office, all the rooms are decorated. We have big Christmas villagers and trees, and our first year, we had a very wonderful Santa that unfortunately, six months later, passed away. But his best friend now comes up to the plate and uses his Santa costume. What we use Christmas for is to benefit the local food bank. People can come in, it costs them nothing to come in and have cookies and sing songs and look at the villagers. If they would like a picture with Santa for their children, it's a four-by-six that they do get right at that time. It's, the cost is an item for the food bank, our local food bank. It could be a can of soup, a box of macaroni and cheese, it doesn't matter. This benefits our community in a lot of ways. The families who can't afford to take their kids to the mall for the picture with Santa Claus, which can be quite pricey, this gives them a chance to have a picture with Santa Claus. It benefits our local food bank, which is right behind our office, and it's, I hate to say it, but on a Thursday afternoon at 3:00 in the afternoon, they're already lining up to get the food, and it doesn't open until 6:00. There's a great need for that, and that's like a pet project of mine in my office. But these, these two events, we do them twice, it's twice a year, it benefits the community. It's how we give back to the community that a lot of us live in and all of us work in. This is our anchor community. This is where our office is. This is where we want to give back. And by getting the word out, by giving out the flyers to the two elementary schools, it really gets the word out there for us, and it targets the kids we want. We don't mind if teenagers come in on Halloween, we've had them do it, they're very well behaved, I'll give them credit for that, and they got their candy too. But we like the little ones to come in, because they enjoy it. And we had families last year, a few people came in, and they had, you could tell, they were in need, they had nothing to give for the food bank, they had no money, but they got their picture. Okay? We took the picture. We have people who sponsor us, they pay for the photo paper, they pay for the ink. I have a setup, I do it right on my laptop, right there, so they get their picture right away. But while they're waiting, we have a story corner where they sit, and they, we have Nancy read stories, they sing Christmas songs, the kids get to pick out the books, they have cookies and cider, or cookies and cocoa. It's all nonprofit, it's all for the community, and the Christmas one is really important to us because it serves, there's multiple purposes there. We get some enjoyment from it. The people who can't afford it have a nice picture of their children with Santa Claus. The kids get to see Santa, and they love the Christmas villagers. And the corner where they have stories and songs, they don't want to leave, they want to stay, let's have another, and it's a wonderful, wonderful time. Advertising, as you know, is very, very pricey. It's not something that we could afford to do. But by giving out these flyers, we reach our little target market, our little guys that come in for us. And that's what we would like to do. I'm not even asking you to change your policies, just make a little exception, you know? And if you're only going to give it to us once a year, we'd rather have Christmas, because we get to, we give a lot more at Christmas, it benefits a lot more people. That's basically what I'm asking for, and thank you for giving me the time to speak with you.
Well, I appreciate you coming in. I know you wanted to come in and for the public to know that you are speaking to our policy on distribution and posting of non-school-related materials, which has come up about different flyers, what is allowed in our schools to go home with our children now. If anybody has any question on that, they can find that policy on our webpage. But I appreciate you coming in, and I certainly will take it under advisement with the committee.
Thank you very much. We'd like to know if we're going to press you, but we have, if we are going to do it, we have a lot of decorating to do, because we want to do it the first Saturday in December this year. Last year, we did it a little bit late, and there was a storm, and a lot of families missed out. So, we want to do it a little bit early to get the families in there, so they have that chance to have that picture.
Very good. As you know, two of our members are out tonight, but they will hear the presentation, and I will speak with them also.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Next on our agenda is an RFP on options of central office and storage space. I'm going to turn this one also over to Mr. Himmelberger. You were going to leave, go ahead, you can go ahead and say goodbye. Thanks.
Congratulations.
You weren't watching the agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just wanted to be, bring a brief history of where we are and where we have been. As everyone probably knows, the police station was an important piece of business before the town, started by the previous town manager, Mr. Powers, and completed and dedicated just a couple of weeks ago. At the time, the plan was floated by the town that the central office could possibly go to, move into the old police station, because it would accomplish a couple of things. It would be perfect fit for space, and it would allow the town to raise the property at 5 Sigourney Street, as the parking would be far more valuable than this old house. What happened in the short time since that was initially floated was that the original estimate was somewhere around a half a million dollars to renovate the old police station, the old, yes, the old police station. And as the economy went into the tank very quickly in 2007, 2008, that was no longer a reality for the town. And having had some conversations with the town manager about the future, we were wondering if we could have the committee approve for Mr. Matthew and the central office school district to go out for a request for proposal to see if there are any other viable spaces for office and storage for the central office. And it's strictly an exploratory matter, and I think that certainly, for the long term, something will have to be done, just because of the overall condition of the current central office, which I believe has served the district and the town for quite a number of years, with minimal upkeep, I might add. So, that is where we stand. I'm not sure, Mr. Matthew, if you wanted to offer any clarification, but that is what we are asking.
Just to reiterate, by doing the RFP process, it will not create a commitment on anybody's behalf unless it's properly accepted. So, exploring is much different than making a commitment.
Well, I think, I'll turn my colleagues to, but I think any one of us who has ever been to central office, it is a good idea for always to explore our options, but we are probably timed to do something at the central office. I know what, certain space isn't even usable any longer for whatever different reasons down there. But, comments, concerns? Mr. Peterson?
The RFP process is for a full scope, not just for the one building. Is that the way I understand it? You're not RFP-ing just for the police station? It will be a total exploratory of other lands, other buildings, other spaces in our own buildings, whatever.
Yes, sir.
Right. I'm going to be upfront with you, I don't support the police station at all. But, and on the storage space, I'm not certain what that means. How many are functioning in the central office now?
The storage space, we're only, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. The storage space, Mr. Peterson, was strictly the title of the RFP for office and storage, which other districts had used. But we obviously do need some storage for records and files that we must keep for a certain number of years.
That's great.
I totally want to get out and get you out of there. I'm 100% behind, looking for something. How many function there presently, right now?
Well, currently, we have seven of us on the first floor and two of us on the second floor, two and a half on the second floor.
And what, two and a half second floor?
Yep.
That's all I have for tonight. I would support the RFP for the search and looking for something. The sooner we can get out of there, the better we are too. But I'm not going to jump from one...
I think it's just for the RFP.
Problem to another, right?
Mr. Spitz?
I also will agree with the RFP. I think it's something that we need to do, and we need to look at. My only concern is that I don't know when we're going to be able to do anything about it. I mean, we're going to have this study done, and we all know that next year's going to be worse than what we dealt with this year. So, I just don't know if we're just wasting our time. I'm in favor, because, you know, I go to the central office, I see the conditions that we have to work in. But at the same time, I don't know if it's realistic to go to the town and say, you know, we found this great place, it's only going to cost you, you know, $150,000. And I mean, that's where I have a little difficulty. I think it's great to do a study, which is non-committal, but at the same time, I really question our timing. That's it.
Okay. I think, I would suggest also just to look at options. I don't know what you have until you look, and maybe options are more than just buying, maybe looking where to go, what to do, what spaces we even have in here. So, I think it encompasses all of that, and I think that's a great idea. In saying that, do we have a motion to let our administration, our central office, to do the RFP?
I'll move to RFP to start the process and see where we stand, because I know that roof is no longer much good, there aren't many slates left on that, we've had leakage, we've had all kinds of problems, and...
And I'll second.
We can't have computers in there.
Second. Have a second call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, three in the affirmative, two absent, and we look forward to the information that you gather. One item on new business that I didn't have down, and I'm just going to put it in now, is the MASCE conference that is usually with some information, some voting. We have, Mr. Peterson, that will be going, and we need to perhaps motion to make him our delegate so he can vote for us. I would, I know Mr. Peterson said he would do that, and he is going. Do you have a motion to make?
So moved.
And I will second that if you call for the vote.
Yes.
Nice vote, yes.
I guess I can hold him.
You vote yes.
At least you're here this year. You're here this year, right. I do have the check, and we're ready to go.
We usually do it on the slide, he's not here. So, three in the affirmative, two absent. Mr. Peterson, you will be our voting delegate at the conference, and I appreciate it.
I have some information I will leave at the office for all of you. I'm out of turn, go ahead. I'll give that to you.
Going to correspondence, I do have a letter from the OEE asking for their intent to go into negotiations for the 2010, so to let everyone know that. We will be going into that. At this time, for the negotiation subcommittee, I will ask Mr. Peterson this year to join me in the negotiation committee, and we will be on the subcommittee of that. Speaking of subcommittees, this time, I'd like to establish the security and crisis subcommittee, and I do have something here, let me just see. I gave everyone an outline of that. We have found the emergency guidebook at central office. So, the subcommittee will actually be a little bit less of what we thought, and I have this little verb. Basically, the motion is to establish the crisis response and security subcommittee with the direction to not only review the current emergency guide that is in effect for the Oxford School District, but to establish any of the guidelines that school officials should follow in their attempt to communicate more effectively or act in the best interests of the community. The subcommittee would include two school committee members, the superintendent, the business manager, principals, parents, and emergency professionals. At this time, I would like to put on that subcommittee, I'll appoint Mr. Spitz and Mrs. Coonan to work with the superintendent and the other members of this subcommittee. And you do already have an emergency guide, so it makes it a lot easier just to review. Mr. Peterson?
I agree with you, but I think it was established. It's just been on hold, so I don't think we really need to reestablish, but if you need a motion, I'll do such, and I have no problem with Bill and Laura doing it if that's your appointment, all right?
Right.
But I think it is already established, and it's just been on hold and nothing been done with it.
If, yeah. The security, we have a security subcommittee that at this time, I'd like...
Right, it's a joint committee now.
This is a little bit different. So, the security, if I could have a motion to dissolve the old security...
The old security, all right.
Have a motion to dissolve that?
I was originally on it, but I'll move to dissolve the...
I will definitely motion to dissolve you, Mr. Peterson.
Call for the vote. Is your second, yes?
Yes.
Three in the affirmative to dissolve the old security.
Now, I'll move to establish the security and crisis committee jointly.
Thank you. I will second that. Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And three in the affirmative to establish the new crisis and security subcommittee.
Who's going to chair that?
I will let the pleasure of your committee to establish whatever works for you. Yep. And at this time, I would ask superintendent if he has anything for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of notes to go along with the fact that the OEA has requested to open negotiations. We finally do have a signed contract for our food service and custodial group, so that they are now under contract for the '09 and '10 school year. And we are in the process of continuing and hopefully finalizing soon the last bargaining unit, which is our instructional aides and paraprofessionals. And it looks like as soon as that contract gets complete for this current year, we'll be moving right along into negotiating with the OEA. As everyone may have seen on the website, we posted the fact that report cards went home last week, and I hope that everyone who did well is very proud of their effort, and those that do have some concerns work with their teachers and with their parents to get their achievement where they know it should be. And this Thursday and Friday is a great opportunity with the conferences for parents and teachers. And that is all I have.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Matthew?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Terrific. Mr. Spitz?
I'm good for tonight, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Peterson?
Well, now that you've thrown me to the wolves again, I have some stuff I will distribute to you. I believe all of you should have gotten a mass delegates manual anyway, which has the resolutions. There are very few this year, because we're concentrating on some other legislation that we're going to propose later instead of the resolutions at this point. We did meet again November 5th, and... We did meet again November 5th, and at this point, and I'll give that to you in the packet form, too, we're not supporting too much of what's on legislation right now, because it's not to the benefit of the schools, to the districts, we don't feel. So, but I'll get that in writing. It is a fairly lengthy booklet, so I may just leave one at the central office, where you can come and look at it, instead of, I don't know where we stand with paper and tree killing and how much I can copy and disseminate. So I'll leave one at the central office, at least, where you can look at it when you sign warrants and things, all right?
Okay.
So you know what we're up to in the next week, and yes, convention is, not next week, but the following week. I have one other request. I would like a full SED report, the same as like the curriculum, by our SED director and not the organization that we hired to consult us. I would like an update from Ms. Baker, please, on the SED situation and where we stand at one of our future meetings coming up.
Mr. Himmelberger?
Just a quick question. Do you know approximately when you would like to have that, so I could pass to Mrs. Baker then, the lead time for her to be prepared?
I'll give her adequate time. I think January... Let's see, the next meeting's after the conference, right?
The 23rd, then we have, I think we only have, we have one in December, maybe?
We have one in December, December 14th. How do we stack on that agenda right now?
Do you think maybe December 14th? That's like six weeks?
Not quite, but we could probably shoot for that.
Maybe 16th?
I would appreciate it as soon as possible, please.
Yep.
So December 14th?
14th, was it?
Approximately.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I will pass it.
I believe that's all I have for tonight, ma'am.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I only have one thing that, if I can ask Mr. Himmelberger if you might mention. By now, I believe all the student advisory councils probably have been established. Could we get for the school committee members, a list of members of all of those, and a little reminder to administrative staff to make sure that we get a copy of those minutes there. Extremely helpful to us to know what's going on in those buildings. But if we could have a list of all the SAC members, that would be great, and maybe we can do something with those later, but...
I'll make sure you get it. Yep.
Perfect. And that's all I have tonight. Future meeting, our next meeting is November 23rd. One of the topics, and now two of the topics, we will talk next meeting about the AP scores and the VHS classes at Oxford High School. I believe Mr. Wells will be joining us for that presentation, and we will put Mr. Himmelberger on the other half of the Growth Model and MCAS presentation. Part B will be then. At this time, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments, and seeing none, I will close the floor. We have no motion for executive session. May I call for a motion to adjourn?
So I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Three affirmative. We are adjourned.